I did start the recording, Joe, so whenever you're ready.
We'll give it a couple more minutes. I know a couple people are running late.
Sounds good.
Hi, Pat. Go ahead. Okay, Bill, we'll get started. We will call to order the Sidra Woolley Planning Commission October 17th, 2023 meeting at 6:32 PM. Can everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call. Commissioner Freiburger.
Present.
Commissioner Cock.
Present.
Commissioner Johnson, I know is going to be late. Commissioner Fournette.
Here.
Here. Commissioner Maddox, absent. Commissioner Fatizzi, here. Commissioner Huggins.
Here.
Here. Has everyone had the opportunity to take a look at the consent agenda item minutes from the September 19th, 2023 meeting? And I will entertain comments if anybody has some.
I just have two minor little typos. If you care to hear.
Absolutely.
Um, amendment, Chapter 10.44 at the top, update sidewalk cafes, should be singular, cafe regulations, at least it is elsewhere in the document. And then about in the first paragraph, there it is, about midway, it says, strategy, or I'm sorry, strategy, streetery associated with the same business, it should be, may be allowed instead of maybe.
Good catch.
That's all.
Oh, yeah.
Pat, you have any comments?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Freiburger?
I do. So, the motion for the sidewalk cafe and streeteries, it didn't list out who moved and who seconded. So, I went back and looked at the, at the meeting, and I moved, and Commissioner Huggins seconded, and it was in favor six to zero. So, I suggest adding that to the...
Paul?
I have no further edits.
Okay, so at this time, I would like to have somebody make a first to approve the minutes of the, from the September 19th, 2023 meeting.
I make that motion.
Commissioner Cock, first, second?
I second.
Commissioner Freib, I'm sorry. I keep doing that to you.
Yeah, I'm not freiburgering.
Absolutely. Any further discussion? If we don't, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed? With the amendments that we recorded. Got that? Cool. Okay. Moving on to the general public comments section of our, of our meeting. If anyone wishes to speak, please limit comments to three minutes or less. Comments may also be submitted via email or mail ahead of all scheduled monthly planning commission meetings and read into the record at that time. Do we have anyone that submitted anything in writing, or?
We do not.
We do not? If you would like to speak, please state your name, your organization, and the address of where you live. At this time, would anyone like to speak during the open general comments? You're gonna have the opportunity later on.
Yes, you'll have an opportunity later. We've put you under the discussion items.
We, we, we have a whole section for you. So, we will open the general public comments at 6:36 PM and close the general public comments at 6:36 PM. So, moving on, we have no public hearings scheduled tonight, but we do have unfinished business. And our unfinished business is possible amendments to Chapter 17.24 SWMC to add a minimum commercial retail floor area requirement for the first floor area facing primary street frontage in the central business district. And with that, Planner McGowan?
All right, thank you.
Go to the floor.
Okay, so this is the second reading of this proposal. So, just to kind of recap, basically what was going on is that there is no requirement for how much commercial space is required to be on the first floor of mixed-use buildings in the central business district. And what we've seen happen with that is people will perform remodels on existing buildings and transform them slowly, slowly into almost entirely residential buildings. And we're trying to maintain that commercial aspect of the central business district as commercial is what we intend for that primarily to be. So, last we saw, I had just taken out, or I had added in, sorry, that, let's see, a minimum of 50% of the first floor area must be designated for commercial and/or retail use. Last time, we had talked about adding in some consideration for private garage spaces, spaces, whether those would be considered part of the commercial space or residential space. So, I had put in, you know, after discussion, we discussed that it was not a good use of commercial space. So, to put in there that private garage space does count as residential. And then, I, I thought I might put something in just to see what you guys thought about for the lobby entrances for those multifamily, just to see if that was something we wanted to consider. So, you'll see in 1724-010, let's see, A2, there is a list of kind of conditions that, so it says, multifamily housing located above the first floor or at the rear of a commercial and/or retail occupancy, per this subsection, must also meet the following, and there's the list. So, a minimum of 50% of the first floor area must be designated for commercial and/or retail use. The commercial and/or retail use shall face the primary street frontage. Private garages are considered a residential use and shall not count toward commercial and/or retail floor area. Then, where feasible, the main entrance to the residential units shall be located at the rear of the building. If rear access is not feasible, the main entrance to the residential units may be incorporated into a maximum of 10% of the commercial and/or retail floor area facing the primary street frontage. If the building is located on a corner lot, the main entrance to the residential units shall be located on the side of the building facing the street with less commercial activity. So, yeah, that's what I put in. And if we'd like to discuss any proposed changes or anything like that, you have the floor.
So, we'll go from left to right, starting. Commissioner Huggins?
Okay, yeah. Thank you. The, the only thing I see, it reads really good, except the, in the last one, it says, where feasible, the main entrance, the residential units shall be located at the rear of the building. If rear access is not feasible, the main entrance to be residential, to the residential units may be incorporated into the, a maximum of 10% of the commercial and/or retail floor area. And I, I'm thinking that first, it should be from commercial, if the, if the residential is, is in back and above, that it'd be first from the residential part, and then if they need a little of the commercial, that it'd be from the commercial. Otherwise, I'll do that every time.
Yeah, so essentially, what I was putting there is if, for whatever reason, the rear access is not able to be done. So, ideally, that was, is what we want. So, rear being where the residential portion would be.
Oh, you're saying interior, back end, okay. Sorry. I, I've seen stuff in other places where they, they build them on the outside, and so I was assuming that they...
Yeah, this is kind of trying to, trying to catch all. So, right, so like, if, if this scenario doesn't work, then this is the next best option. And if that doesn't work, this is the next best option, if that makes sense. So, rear being the best option, if your residential units are at the backside of the building, probably ideally, we'd have the entrance be on, in that residential portion.
Just a quick question. Who makes that determination, right? So, I would believe that we would make that in our design standards. For instance, you know, a lot of people prefer up front. However, if we feel, based upon the availability of space in the back, to say, hey, there, there's room in the back, there's no reason for you to pull it up front. So, where do we have some teeth in that?
So, this would be the teeth, putting it in the code. The design standards and guidelines, I think that would be a good place for it, too. It would need to go under standards. Guidelines often just get overlooked. It's kind of a recommendation, but not something that we can really put any teeth against. But having it codified this way, it's gonna be probably the first thing that people look at as they're kind of designing these things. So, yeah, kind of the thought here is, you know, with the 10% limitation, if rear access isn't available, is just trying to keep that lobby entrance area kind of to a minimum because of that reason, that we want the commercial space to be the primary use here. So, putting some kind of boundary on how much of that space can be taken up by that lobby.
Maybe it's at planner's discretion, if we can do that, because that way, you know, 'cause I can see coming before you and saying, you know, 'cause I want it in the front, it's, it's not feasible in the back.
Exactly.
So, the, so the, so if the planner has the discretion to say that, well, yes, yes, it can go back there, versus, you know, just, like I said, I'm all, I'm great with the percentage and all of that, but I, it just feels a little vague to me. Like, I just misinterpreted it, reading it. So, so maybe it's at planner's discretion, is a possibility.
You know, we put that language in, in other code before.
Could perhaps say, where feasible, at the planner's discretion, the main entrance to the residential units. Oh, well, actually, not there. If, if rear access is not feasible, at the planner's discretion, the main entrance to the residential units may be, and that would clarify that.
I was gonna, I was gonna wait my turn, but since we're on the subject, you could just eliminate the first two words. Start with, "The main entrance to the residential unit shall be located at the rear of the building. If rear access is not feasible, the main entrance," yada, yada.
I like that.
It's kind of redundant, having two feasibles.
It is, but you're right. And in that second sentence, that's where we can add in, upon the determination of city planning staff, or however you would want to word that. So, just add that verbiage into there, but I agree with you, yeah.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I'm okay with that.
Okay, so it would read, "The main entrance to the residential units shall be located at the rear of the building. If rear access is not feasible, the main entrance..."
Is not feasible per determination.
Per the planning director's discretion?
Yeah.
I would just add it to the end of the sentence. "If rear access is not feasible, the main entrance to the residential units may be incorporated into a maximum of 10% of the commercial and/or retail floor area facing the primary street frontage at the planner's discretion."
That works.
That, it reads better that way.
Paul?
I'm okay with that change.
Anything else you would want to add to it?
No, I think that's clear.
Okay.
Yeah, this wasn't complicated.
No.
It's just getting that language in. You did a really good job on it, by the way.
Thank you.
The 50% is, was, was big for me, because it'll be determined on the entire floor area, you know, whether it's 20, 2,000 square feet, or 200, whatever.
Okay. So, I think if we're good with this, then the next meeting, we can have a public hearing on this one.
Public hearing, yeah. Is everybody okay with that?
I am, thank you.
Okay.
Is there any other comments before we move on? And you already have what we need, just those minor modifications to the meeting minutes in this. And that was easy, but it all makes sense, too. Anyone else?
This may be a little bit off topic, and feel free to stop me. Just seeing the alcohol-serving establishments part down here, we're not looking at that right now, but I was thinking about floor area and how we had put down there 60% retail commercial use. We didn't specify how that plays into residential, and that is something that maybe we want to take a look at at some point. I'm not saying right now, but I don't know if there's building code regulations for, that limit a, an alcohol production establishment being in the same building as residential, or, you know, if it's just a, you know, fire rating, they would just have to go through the, and perhaps this is just entirely a building code thing and would be caught if, if a development application came in where there was a proposed mixed-use building that had a, a production establishment downstairs and then residential above. But that, that was just something that occurred to me that we didn't add, address at all in there, so I thought I'd mention it.
That's a good call, and I would say that would be caught by, by fire, because everything goes through fire, public works, everybody's included on a pre-op meeting.
Right.
So, that would get flagged right there.
As far as I know, there's, there's no regulations against having residential with one of those types of establishments, but there are going to be extra kind of measures taken to protect those residents from any kind of hazards that might come about from that kind of...
Franklars or whatever.
Including noise, I would imagine.
Right, noise as well. So, yeah, fire department and building department would handle that at plan review. And then with respect to the percentage for the alcohol production establishments, we did set a 60% commercial-retail requirement. So, in this case, if they wanted to do residential above or behind that kind of situation, then the 60% would take hold instead of 50.
Okay, that was the other thing I was kind of thinking about, is what's that counter? Okay, that, that makes sense to me.
Yeah, depending on the use, that, that number changes. Anyone else? Okay. Schedule will public meeting, and we'll get that, that going. Okay, moving on, we have no new business tonight. However, our final item here tonight is our planning commission discussion items. And that says right here, "Presentation by Jean Eagleson", I have that right, correct? "Propose to have a plaque made and posted on the residence located at 804 Ferry Street, providing a brief history of the property and making reference to the property's placement on Sidra Woolley's historic preservation registry." So, with that, it's our discussion item, but I would say, madam, have the, have the podium.
Last December, my husband Terry South and I came before the planning commission with a really big request. And at that time, the planning commission...
Nicole, you may need to use that wired microphone.
Just hold on one second. I just wanted on the record, Commissioner Johnson is now in attendance.
I can talk louder.
Okay, there, there you go. We're right here.
Could possibly pull over the wired mic if we need to.
I can also talk louder. Last December, my husband Terry South and I were here with what was a big request. And the planning commission had been given the additional duty of being the local review board, and came for that night, the Sidra Woolley Historic Preservation Commission. And in that meeting, to our delight, and we are very grateful for the fact that our application to Muscat County for special tax valuation was approved by the planning commission functioning as the Sidra Woolley Historic Preservation Commission that night. I mean, it was pretty amazing that the process was completed by December 31st, which was the deadline. And we really appreciated all the work, well, Nicole, John Coleman, Charlie Bursh, and others made it happen for us. Another outcome of that meeting was that our home, which is at 804 Ferry Street, it's known as the Dr. James and Margaret Mills House, and also as Valley Hospital. It became the first property on the Sidra Woolley Register of Historic Places. And I think the, the property, the house deserved to be on the register. It really does have magnificent history in this town. It was Valley Hospital from 1916 to 1929, and 1918 to 1929. It was the only hospital in this part of the county. It served everybody up wherever, and was the hospital until the Valley Hospital was opened in 1929. So, last December, big request. Tonight, it's little. I hope you see it as little. Our house is not on the National Register of Historic Places, but it is on the State Register of Historic Places. And what we would like to do is create a plaque that also acknowledges that the house is on the Sidra Woolley Register of Historic Places. So, the handout that I have for you is representative of the existing plaques. If a property's on the National Register, then it, the government gives them this really big gorgeous brass plaque. Northern State Hospital is on the National Register. So, that's what's on the first page. On the second page, I have for you what the Washington State Heritage Register suggests is needed. They don't give out plaques, they give a paper certificate. We framed it, it's in a hallway, a hallway of the house. But we are planning to have a plaque made that would have the language that's at the top of this page. And that's what's recommended by the Washington State Registry. And so, following it in wording and composition, then what we're asking is, could we have permission to have a plaque made that would say, the property has been placed on the Sidra Woolley Register of Historic Places, number one, by the Sidra Woolley Historic Preservation Commission. Now, what I realize is that the five-member Sidra Woolley Historic Preservation Commission hasn't been formed yet. And a recent conversation with Mayor Johnson suggested that after the new planning director, there's, I guess, somebody's gonna be hired after that happens, and that person is settled into the position, then there might be a point in time where, I don't know if it's gonna be me or somebody else, brings up the notion that perhaps that commission could be formed. And I realize, there's the possibility that that commission could say, "We're not gonna have plaques," or they could say, "Well, we'll have plaques, but it wouldn't have this language." And I'm, we're willing to take the risk now. If you would approve and give us permission to have a plaque made like that, we would do it, we would pay for it. I know Terry can install it. And it'll be right there. The house has pillars on the edge of all the front steps, and there are pillars, big front porch. And many of you may know that the Sidra Woolley Museum has an annual fundraiser, that's the holiday home tour. They didn't do it for the years of the pandemic, but they are having it again this year, December 9th, Saturday, December 9th. And our house is on the tour. And I'd like to have these plaques. We'll have the State Registry, and if you approve, we'd have the Sidra Woolley Registry plaque, and it might generate some interest. And that'd be people who come in and say, "What's, what's Sidra Woolley Historic what?" And we would be able to talk about that. There are people who apparently have been asking questions about, it's a rumor, maybe there's gonna be a, an historic registry, what is that all about? And so, essentially, would like to help participate in a sort of, sort of, advertising, if you'd say. So, that's our request, to have permission to have a plaque made that would indicate that the property is on the Sidra Woolley Register of Historic Places.
Let me ask a quick question. How close did we get to that December 31st deadline? Was it like December 31st, or did we get a week, or so?
Oh, I think it was December 30th. I went to the auditorium's office, you know, or actually, the assessor's office, and met with them and had the paperwork, and paid some money here, and then gave this document, and I took that over there. I think it was the 29th. It was quite good.
Banging on their door, what was that?
I knew it was tight.
Oh, it's very good.
Yeah, and I knew it was tight. I'm just glad we pulled it off.
Because I think your meeting was December 21st or 22nd.
Yeah, it was, it was close. Wow.
These pieces of paperwork all happened, and...
So, I'm just gonna jump ahead here, because we're, we're gonna talk this out anyway. And I believe I can do it, to request that somebody makes a motion to approve signage creation acknowledging the historic importance of 804 Ferry Street. Something real basic. I think we can definitely do that.
Yeah.
But somebody needs to say it. But anyway, let's talk about this, because this is a really cool project.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do, do we do it as, as body, or do we finish our planning commission meeting and then start as the, as... Do, do we do it as this body or do we finish our planning commission meeting and then start as the, as the board and do it? Or do we, uh, or is there, I don't know procedure well enough to know whether, when we're, which hat we're wearing or if we can wear them at the same time or?
Yeah, that's a good question. Well, you guys were the original body.
Yeah.
That made that determination in the first place. So kind of my idea is we finish up with this meeting and switch hats.
Okay.
Do we need to do a, a new call to order, pledge of allegiance, roll calls?
Do we even have that commission yet? I thought you said the commission hasn't been established.
We're in lieu of.
In lieu of.
In lieu of.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Can we ask questions during this meeting or do we have to wait for the next meeting?
Well, this is under the discussion and information. Discuss away.
We can discuss it all we want. I just didn't know if we could take action unless we are.
I don't know.
Adjourned as that body. So, but yeah, I'm happy to talk about it. Oh, you're going to start here. All right. Yeah. Yeah, I think it's a great idea. And I've seen these, my wife is from Beverly, Massachusetts, and they have state, federal and city designations and, and they have the nice plaques on the, on the buildings. It looks really good. You walk down the street, you, you get a history lesson. So I really appreciate that. My only thing is that I was going to say, and I'm not going to tell you how to do it, but it would be nice if you, on the Cedar Woolley plaque, if you incorporated what you have written there, but incorporate maybe something like this property, the whatever the name of the property is. You said it when you were.
Oh, yeah.
Do it, has been placed on the Cedar Woolley Historic Register and keep the number one, but maybe not as big and, and get things down so you can get it on the plaque. But it'd be nice to know when you read that historic sign that you're, you know which house. And it might protect you from it getting lifted at some point too, because it's, the number one is prestigious. So if you have the name of the, of the property with it, you get both the historic information plus it protects you a little bit from somebody just grabbing number one and putting it on their building.
We do, by our front door have signs. One says the Dr. James and Margaret Mills House along the other side circa 1912. And then on the other side, there's a sign that says Valley Hospital, 1916, 1929. But that's, you know, up the steps and certainly be on the block.
Yeah, okay. Anyway, that's something to think about at least. And like I said, we're just discussing tonight, but I thought I'd throw that out, out there. So. Yeah, that's all I have.
Adam?
I have no issue with it. Just from a procedural point of view, I just want to make sure that we are within our rights to do that without any sort of hearing to go ahead and, and make a motion or is this something we can only discuss? Just wanted to be clear on that.
You know, let's keep talking about this and let's, we want to make sure that we do it right. So we'll, we'll just put this on aside till next month and just run it by city attorney what they want to do. So when we do it, we, we know it's bulletproof. But it's a big thumbs up from, from my perspective. And like I said, a motion to, you know, just with that language to acknowledge the historic importance. We'll figure out some language, but we're all in, but we want to get it right too. Me?
Be sure for that.
I wanted to, I wanted to swing by your house to see what it looked like, but I didn't have time. So I Google mapped, searched and it's a beautiful house, absolutely beautiful. And I did see that plaque in the photo. So I was wondering, I'm glad you said that. So I'm all for this. I've seen other houses on Woodby Island, for instance, that had the plaques and historical site and had the date and the people's name that built it. And I always, I'm fascinated with that. But I was also told that once you do that, you can't touch the house because it basically is a, I don't know, monument or something. And so is that, is there truth to that or?
The agreement, when we were given, when the property was placed on the Register of Historic Places, we signed an agreement that was a number of pages long. It does have some limitations, but not, you can repaint. You can fix things that are damaged in age, material appropriate way. You wouldn't be able to go, you couldn't put a red tile roof on the house, for example. So there's some limitations, but, and you, and you wouldn't be able to somehow add a remodel to the front of the house or change the footprint.
Okay, so you're just limited in remodeling kind of things. Okay, I used the wrong word. But, and then you mentioned something about tax. Is there like a big tax benefit to be registered?
If your property is either the National or the State Registry, then you can apply to the county for a special tax valuation based upon the money that you spent to do renovations. And what happens is they have a two-year window. Our renovation took place over three years because the pandemic was happening. So that made things quite interesting. And the, the reason our timeframe got so short was that the house was put on the registry, state registry, July, now July 20th. But our two-year window ended December 31st. And that's why they got very time urgent. What it did was give us a slight reduction in property taxes. It will be applied every year for 10 years. It's, you know, it's not automatic, but if you're put on the registry, you get this special tax valuation. You have to be on the state registry or the national registry first.
Okay. And then what qualifies a house to make it 100 years old or something? Is there a threshold?
For the state registry?
Yeah.
There's a long application. Ours was about 35, 38 pages long, in which you detail the history of the house. And there are a number of criteria under which a property can be considered. And for our house, it met three categories. One was that there was an important person in the community whom lived there, was operated there, literally. That was Dr. Mills. That the building had significance in the community and that was the Valley House Hospital part. But the third thing is that it's a really good example of a craftsman style home. And there are internal features that are just amazing. And what we were so pleased when we bought the house, it was not well maintained. Hadn't been well maintained for decades. But there's this original flooring throughout the house. It was all this winged hide that's original, built in with a hutch in the dining room. So it was pretty easy in terms of our application. I became, communicated a lot with Michael Hauser, who's the state architectural historian. And he said from the beginning, there's no doubt, we just have to get a lot of information, dig out the history and get it all written up. So there's not a, there's not one specific guideline or, I think, maybe back to it. I think the property may have to at least 50 years old. Because I do think there's some mid-century modern properties that are on the state registry. But here in Cedar Woolley, not a lot of craftsmen homes and bungalows and early 1900s to 1920s, a lot of homes in that era.
Yeah, over 100 years easily. I could think of a bunch. Hey, would you mind potentially scanning both of those applications and forwarding a copy to Nicole? You, you have them?
I have them, yeah.
Okay. Share them with us and I'll tell you why. Because as I'm looking at right now where we're acting as the Cedar Woolley Historic Preservation Commission, I want to know more about it, what we're looking at from a detailed perspective, based upon what the requirement's going to be from anybody looking to do something like this.
Sure.
I mean, this is the first time I'm doing anything, but I understand applications.
Can do.
Mr. Cock?
First of all, I wanted to praise you for the effort and I'm sure expense of restoring a historic property in town. It's, there's, too often historic properties are allowed to just fall apart. And when that happens, we lose our history. So thank you for you and your husband's efforts. I don't really have anything else to add. I, I do think that there's an element of first time that we just want to make sure we get everything right on this. I'm totally okay with this plaque. I think it's a wonderful idea. And I'll try to make the, I'm sure my wife would like this historic home tour. That sounds like a lot of fun. And hopefully your historic designation, you mentioned Northern State, but maybe elsewhere in town, it's the first of many. So thank you for being a pioneer in that regard.
Yeah, setting a precedent is really important. So. I'm going to get them in a second. So Commissioner Johnson, welcome.
Yeah, I apologize to the commissioner. I do want to say that I have had the privilege of touring the home. It's absolutely gorgeous. It's a wonderful restoration that they've done. You can definitely tell that they have poured a lot of love and a lot of money and a lot of time and effort into restoring this home. And they've done an absolutely fantastic job in preserving an important piece of Cedar Woolley history. And, and being the first out of the gate, I, I appreciated the comment. I can't remember if it was Commissioner Fatisi, but the, the concept of setting a precedent. So, you know, I, I fully support this conceptually and want to see it happen and to bring it forth. I do want to make sure that it is done right. One, for precedent's sake. Two, you know, I'm, I have a, my background is law. So obviously I, I want to do everything as legally possible. But also, you know, I, I don't want to have any sort of unintended consequences by not first being able to kind of be briefed and reviewed on, on the legality portion of all of this. And wanting to make sure that, you know, the, the joy that y'all have put into making this home so important and such a gem for woolly. You know, I'd, I'd hate to see that be robbed by having something coming down the pike because we didn't cross all our Ts and dotted all our Is. So that's my one thing is just maybe tabling this for another month to be able to, to yeah, review those applications, get briefed by city legal counsel and make sure that we're, we are doing this properly, that we are within, acting correctly within our role as the in lieu of historic commission and, and just do it right from the beginning. So set, set a standard and set a precedent that others can follow. But otherwise, you, you have my full support. Thank you.
So Nicole, so I guess my question is with, with all this input here, do we need to just have another committee like stop this and then do a new meeting under the, under the Preservation Commission, which I believe we're, we're all members of? So do I need a, do we need to publish the agenda?
I, yes, I would, I would say we'll want a full agenda and to have it, you know, publicly posted and all that sort of thing.
That's what I thought.
I do want to get in touch with the city attorney before we go and jump into that too, just to make sure, you know, if we could, since we've all spoken here and discussed it and we're ready to go with approval, if we could just make that one simple, quick meeting and call it a day.
And that's fine. It's easy to start a new meeting, call to orders, roll calls, all the stuff. We got the stuff dialed in.
So let me get in touch with Nikki and then I'll give you a call.
I was going to say, I think, I think once you've done all that, I, I think you, once you've talked to all those people and everything and got it all sorted out that way, I think we can probably do it on the same evening and just do one after the other. So we don't have to come out a special evening for that.
Right.
But just, yeah, we'll do whatever process they say we need to, to do to get through the meetings properly. Yeah.
Yeah.
We have a public meeting, next meeting on the commercial stuff. And I don't see that taking too long. So you're looking at it about the same time. If you hear seven o'clock, I think you'll, you'll be fine. You don't have to sit and go through what we go through. So. But anyway, yeah, we just want to do it right. Sir?
Terry wants to talk to it.
You could, you could take us, you could, you could, you have all, you have the floor.
So much has been said and even pictures represent well the physical aspects of this property. But it's important to explain also that it's a great privilege to live there. And it is so because on the inside, one is present among the things that Jeannie designed and organized and executed as the contractor on this job. So not only did she put a lot of work into this process that you've become a part of, but she is also the person who made it what it is. And if you've seen it, you'll appreciate that. If you haven't or when you do, please understand that Jeannie is the person that made this happen. And one of the privileges, there are many privileges of living there. One is this aesthetic thing I'm referring to. But there's another one I want to share with you, which is that when there and receiving a phone call and receiving as well the common greeting that involves a question, how are you? I'm able to say, well, I'm in the hospital.
Bravo.
This office is a former operating.
Well, I'll be coming by. I can't wait to see the place.
Yeah.
It sounds like you did a stellar job. Yeah.
It's so December 9th and certainly one opportunity.
Okay.
I guess I read in a letter that came to us from the museum that tickets are available ahead of time and then at the door that evening. And they give you then the brochure for everybody's going to be submitting a photo and description of the history of the houses. And this year, and I think it's a very good plan that they have, the houses are all on Ferry Street. And one is just a block down Ball Street. So it's going to be possible to park and pick up your materials, book at the museum and then walk to the houses. The one year that Terry and I went on the tour, which was the year that we had purchased the property, that was 2019, the houses were spread around town. So you'd drive and go see one house and have to get back in the car and drive over to Talhot Street and see, you know. And this year, I think it's going to be quite nice for visitors, unless it's raining heavily or something. If it's snowing, it'd be really cool. So that's going to be certainly one opportunity for some.
Awesome.
And thank you. Thank you for your kind comments. It's nice to, it was good to have the acknowledgement.
I think we need to thank you.
I didn't catch the time, December 9th? When are they?
December 9th. Gosh, I'd have to double check. I think it starts either at five or six and then goes until nine o'clock this year, later than.
Okay, with that, moving forward, is there a motion to adjourn or any further comments on any of this?
None for me, thank you.
Anyone? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I so move.
Mr. Cock, second?
I'll second.
Mr. Flyburger, do we have any further discussion with that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No? Meeting closes at 7:18 PM. Thank you, everyone, and thank you. Yeah. We'll get this done.